At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance is applied of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. The, well, note for the record, Councilmember Schaefer is participating in this meeting virtually. The, because of that, our votes, with the exception of the adjournment, and will, will be roll call votes, so that'll, our city clerk, Stephen Anderson, will, will monitor the roll call votes. So we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item would be, consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and the work session. Both of those were held on July 9th. Council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note?
Move to approve is written.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Amanda. Discussion, there's no discussion on minutes, so we will move to a vote. I'll call on Stephen Anderson to call the roll.
Meister?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes, and the motion does pass. We'll move then on to the public hearings. The first, we have three public hearings this evening. First public hearing would be on a new on-sale liquor license for Cezanne Kacharka LLC. So this is a public hearing for this liquor license, and then following the public hearing, we will consider the granting of the liquor license for this establishment. So I'll call on Stephen Anderson, city clerk, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a new on-sale liquor license for Cezanne Kacharko. You said probably better. This is going to be located at 1404 East College Drive, which is the former Four Seas location. City ordinance and state law require that only one intoxicating liquor license can be at a location. The Four Seas previously had a wine and beer license back in 2018, and then once they closed, that license did lapse. So as of right now, there is no current license at this location, so it wouldn't be a transfer. This is strictly a new license application.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. The, is there anyone here this evening, either in the audience or in the council, that has any input regarding this public hearing on this liquor license?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
By Jim, seconded by Steve to close the public hearing. Discussion on that motion? If there's no discussion, Stephen, would you call the roll?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass, so that will consider granting the liquor license for Cezanne Kacharko LLC. Any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve the combined sale and Sunday intoxicating liquor license. I am not going to say the name.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion on that motion? If not, Stephen, would you call the vote?
Lozinski?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes, and the motion does pass. Just a comment, good to see that business open again and offer another variety of food in the city of Marshall. Agenda item number three, the proposed increase in the liquor fees. We will have a public hearing on those fees. Following a public hearing, we'll consider the resolution that would adopt those fees. Once again, I'll call on city clerk Stephen Anderson to conduct his public hearing.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. State statute requires that when there is an increase in liquor license fees, that a public hearing be called and heard. On June 12th, all license holders that have an intoxicating liquor license were mailed letters. Back in the 90s, the liquor license was actually $5,000. Then in the early 2000s, it was reduced to 4,200. And then in 2018, it was again reduced to 3,000. At the 2018 meeting, the Brewer taproom fee was increased from 250 to 500. But because there was a decrease, and the Brewer taproom didn't fall under that specific state statute subdivision, no public hearing was heard. From what I can tell, I don't know the last time a public hearing was done in Marshall for an increase in liquor license fees. So this is probably the first one in roughly 30 years. There are 14, 15 now, with the agenda item we just passed, there are 15 businesses that now have an on-sale liquor license. 11 that have a off-sale beer license, three that have an on-sale beer license, and then two with a wine license. The Ways and Means Committee and staff recommended that the on-sale intoxicating liquor license be increased by 500, the off-sale beer by $60, the on-sale beer by 50, and then the temporary one-to-three day be increased by $45.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. For this public hearing, is there any member of the audience or member of the council that wishes to provide an idea?
What is the reason to increase it about 18%? Besides, we want an increase of 18%.
So we did have comparable cities that we looked at that are roughly the same size as Marshall. It's up there on the screen.
Can we switch to this? Thank you.
So when the Ways and Means Committee looked at it, we were looking at roughly the 12,000 to 18,000 population. Marshall's liquor license is about 500 below the average. So that's why they decided on a $500 increase to get it to at least the average of all the other cities that are roughly our size. In addition to that, most cities have an investigation fee. If you look on the far right column, that's on top of the actual liquor license itself. So you pay the liquor license fee, and then you also have to pay for an investigation fee. So the total liquor license is actually higher for most cities. Ours is included with the liquor license fee.
Okay, thank you, Stephen, for that explanation. It was considered by the Ways and Means Committee. Any comments from the members of the...
Yep, same thing. Councilmember Lozinski and Mr. Mayor, we talked about it and just went through the averages for all the cities. We don't want to be the most expensive. We don't want to be the least expensive, but we have to catch things up to where they were. So we decided middle of the road, and there's no, like Stephen said, there's no investigatory fees that we put on, so that's what it was decided.
See, I'm not opposed to us being the lowest one to help our private businesses. I know that some of these businesses are still struggling. Your restaurants, I've, just, we have some restaurants in Marshall. I mean, I've heard rumors that they may not be here. They're just rumors, I don't get into that. But I don't think it's bad to be the lowest people on a fee. I hate fees. I hate user fees. It's just a hidden tax. I would not support this. I think we just leave it where it's at, and $3,000, they pay property taxes, and they support our community. I'd rather keep them in town than have them close.
Okay, we're in the public hearing. Other, any other input as part of this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I did receive an email from Matt Schnorr just before the meeting. If you want that read into the record or not.
Yes.
So Matt wrote that, I understand in the past, we have looked at basic, what are similar-sized towns doing as a kind of measure stick, but that might only be part of the picture. How many licenses are those communities issuing per 1,000 residents might also be a relevant barometer in determining fees. I'm old now, so pre-your term, I remember when the license was dropped from 5,000, and the question arose from the license holders about what the city's actual cost to issue a license, and what do those costs look like. Nobody had a real answer. At the time, the only significant cost identified by the city was that of police calls and extra patrol. Our response was, we already pay for a coverage via other taxes, and what did Walmart pay? What did Sunrise Court pay? As police logs indicate, that they had more calls for service than any liquor license holders. Fast forward today, I can assure you, calls for service to the bar and license holders aren't an all-time low.
Thank you, Stephen. Go ahead.
And city attorney can comment on this too, but there are calls to the police department. I don't have a log. There are costs, and it's not the only thing. We aren't charging for background investigations, but that does occur. It's interesting, we've had this discussion on food trucks, and looking at fees for food trucks and the requests from established licenses holders who have some of these similar licenses, that we should charge a higher fee. So it does create a much fairer market, in addition to paying for the services on, on what we do as a city, whether it be the police department or the city clerk work. Sometimes planning and zoning can get involved to ensure that we're in compliance with that as well. So the other perspective on this as well is, you know, we, we want to rely a lot on general property tax, but in this particular case, it really is serving a particular subset of individuals who, who want to receive that type of service, a specific consumption. Should the general public as a whole, the other general property tax, pay for license fees? That's generally not how governments go forward in providing for services. In certain aspects, a fee-based system is, is the appropriate way to do it. Similar to food trucks, we looked at comparable cities, and I think it's a fair way to do it, in addition to some of the things we mentioned in terms of the city work that's being, that's being done. So I just want to comment on that as well.
And any other input as part of the public hearing?
Now, all the bar owners were invited to this public hearing?
The notification?
Yes, they were.
Seeing none of them showing up, I'm guessing they must not have a problem with it.
The only one I've heard from is...
Matt Schnorr holds three of those licenses, correct?
I don't know who that is.
He owns the Woodneckle, he owns the, probably he owns Pizza Ranch. So I believe he has three of those licenses.
Pizza Ranch does not have a license.
They have a 3-2 license, don't they?
They do not.
They used to, but...
Okay, any other input as part of the public hearing? Now, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, Stephen, would you call the vote?
Alcorn?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Schaefer?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll now consider then the, the resolution that would adopt the fees with the fee level as discussed at the public hearing is in the resolution. Any questions about the resolution? If not, is there a motion?
I saw move.
Motion by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Stephen, would you call the vote?
Mulewski?
Yes.
Lozinski?
No.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Meister?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
And Burns?
Yes, so that motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number four, also a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the franchise agreement with Minnesota Energy Resources. And once again, Stephen, I'll ask you to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance for a franchise agreement with Minnesota Energy Resources. Minnesota Energy Resources was approached by Donek to receive service of a natural gas line to their location on North 7th Street, just across from the bridge. Under Chapter 10 of the city charter, a franchise is required to hold a public hearing and can only be granted by an ordinance, even though it very much looks like an agreement. Jason Anderson and I have been in talks with Minnesota Energy Resources, and we've also worked with Robert Vos at Candy and Graven, and city attorney Whitmore has also helped in modifying our current franchise agreement with Great Plains Natural Gas to fit the request of Minnesota Energy Resources. The franchise agreement is very identical to what Great Plains Natural Gas Agreement looks like, with the largest change being the specific service area of the agreement. The service area is going to be mostly around the North 7th Street area, instead of having access to the entire city, so there's not crossings of gas lines and be less hazard for the city. There is going to be an option for Minnesota Energy to have amendments to the service area if they wish, if they get requests from other customers down the line.
Okay, so we'll open up for public input, either from the audience or the council, as part of this public hearing. Stephen, just a couple of clarifications. The current franchise with Great Plains Natural Gas is a non-exclusive franchise, correct?
Correct.
And the new franchise would also be, the franchise fee would be applicable to the new franchise?
It is, yes. And that is also built into the ordinance.
Other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
By Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, Stephen, would you call the vote?
Meister?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. We'll now consider the, the ordinance, the adoption of the ordinance that would grant the franchise. Any questions about that ordinance? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, Stephen?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes, and the motion does pass. That concludes the public hearings for this evening. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and they include a preliminary plat of Ag Plus Swenson Edition. This will be the introduction of the preliminary plat. Also would be the airport's no removal equipment building, the resolution authorizing the execution of the MinDOT agreements for the SRE construction site development, consider the approval for a temporary liquor license for the BFW, consider the approval of a off-site gambling permit for the American Legion, the transfer of the 3.2% off sale, and the tobacco license to 727, Inc., formerly known as Freedom Gas Station. The, or maybe currently known also. Consider the resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed assessments for unpaid services for ice, snow, and weed elimination, and consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purpose of a separate discussion? If not, is there a motion for the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, Stephen, would you call the vote?
Mulewski?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
And Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number 12, consider the, the authorization for advertisement for bids on the new proposed Marshall Aquatic Center. So this is the, not the culmination, but is the culmination of a lot of planning work, a lot of design work, a lot of input, in fact, years of input, which brings us here this evening. So I'll ask city administrator Sharon Hanson to give a brief introduction, and then she will also introduce David Locke from, go ahead.
Okay, I provided a lot of detail in the memo, which you probably saw, just to give it some historical perspective and, and the progress we made, most recently in the last couple of years. But we've been talking about the aquatic center for quite some time. It is a 1937 pool, the main body is, and so it does make it one of the oldest pools in the state of Minnesota. And really, the, the city and governing bodies prior to this council's struggled with making enough improvements to really make it sustaining. We did have 292 Design Group do a feasibility study on the existing pool, which pointed out many, many deficiencies. In May of '21, we engaged Stockwell Engineering, and that was following some, an RFP process, and also seeing some of the designs that Stockwell had, had produced for other communities. And we really liked what they did for other communities. I maybe shouldn't hold you to this, but we're aware that there isn't a lot of change orders that Stockwell experienced, at least with the Yankton Pool, so we're hoping that happens with this one too, if the bid gets approved. But May of '23, legislation was approved. That was after kind of a, a really good start in '22, but legislation, legislature adjourned before we were successful in getting a bill. And then, of course, November 7th, with the referendum, 66% approval, which if you look statewide at, at sales tax referendums in November of '23, I think we were one of the highest successful referendums. I think, I think Edina was close, around the 60% as well. So really good support for the, for the referendum. We'll turn it over to David Locke. I do want to add that, and he'll probably mention this too, lots of stakeholder input. In addition to the referendum being highly supportive, we really tried to stay true to what we received for input, and, and I think even dating back to May of 2021, we really kind of stuck with it. And, and that, I think, for the committee, which was councilmember Schaefer, Mulewski, and Alcorn, that was important for them as well, to just kind of stay true to what the public was anticipating and their expectations. So I'll reserve any further comments or try to answer any questions following David's presentation on, on the advertisement for bids, so.
Okay, thank you, David, or thank you, Sharon, and welcome, David.
Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing us to come here this evening. As Mayor eloquently put, this is kind of the culmination of a lot of design work that's already gone into, a lot of public input that we heard throughout the last couple of years, putting together a facility that really meets the expectations of what people have come to expect in a community aquatic center. We, the renderings you see before you are from what we put together as a part of the concept and schematic design early on in the process in response to the public input, and these renderings largely have not changed. They are the same, very, very similar design as to what is going out for bid. We met with you guys a couple of weeks ago to talk about some of the changes that have been made to the splash pad to make that a more dynamic feature, and that is a change that we've done. But everything else largely mirrors what you see in front of you here this evening. The estimate, cost estimate, is, is also very similar to where we started in the process. Approximately 16.5 million for construction, and then that would be for the base bid. We have elements in there for owner furnished materials, geotechnical testing as well. There are seven alternates that we've identified, pending that we get good bids, and that would be the body slide flume runout, so that goes into a runout. The lily pad water walk, which is kind of an appendage, so to speak, of the activity pool. Some of the shade structures, about, I'd say, half are in the base bid, and another half are in an alternate. There's some climbing walls that could be incorporated into the, kind of the deeper pool, the lap swimming pool across from the diving boards, and those would be an alternate. We've also included an alternate of demolition of the existing facility. That's just a couple of blocks away. This site is a new site at College Drive in Saratoga, and so the removal of the existing facility, or I should say, the, the construction of this new facility is not contingent upon the removal of the old facility, which is what you would typically see. You know, we're going to tear down what's there, and we're going to build something new. With changing sites, that's not necessarily something that has to happen right away as a part of the, of the bid. We also have an alternate in there for some additional kind of precast elements along College Drive that would add a little bit more privacy for vehicles that are kind of, the design sits at a little bit of an angle. It's not true north, because College Drive doesn't run true north. So as people are coming down the road, these, these panels will provide a little bit additional privacy to the facility, along with an option for monument signage along College Drive. And then alternate number seven is additional controls that would be incorporated into the lifeguard room that allows kind of the, the head of the facility, if they're in the lifeguard room, to be able to control some of the pumps, namely like the lazy, the leisure river, you know, how fast that propulsion is going in there, along with some of the other features as well. Now, that is, that is not something that has to be done. It's nice to have, which is why we've got it listed in there as an alternate. The, with your approval this evening, the project will then advertise the, the first week of August, August 6th. It will advertise again on the 13th. We will have a pre-bid meeting on August 19th, where we'll invite contractors to come and ask questions about the project. That will be a team's meeting to allow kind of maximum exposure to everybody that may not be in town but is interested in, in the project. And then the, we will open bids then here at City Hall on Thursday, August 29th. With that, does anybody have any questions at all?
I'd also add that the, the pool committee or the Aquatic Center committee did spend time a week ago going through in detail. Spent a lot of time.
Yeah, we submitted our 95% design submittal shortly after the, our last council meeting, and since then, we've met with city staff. John probably now knows way more about pools than he cares to be a part of in the future. We had a whole day of meetings going through everything in detail. Staff has continued to provide comments through this week, and we've continued to coordinate with our own design team on coordination items, or kind of, you know, crossing, crossing Ts and dot nis, making sure that we've got everything covered. We'll be incorporating all those comments into a final... We'll be incorporating all those comments into a final bid set next week, and then we'll be sending that out for Health Department code officials review. We've been working with local code officials at the 60% set and at the 95% set, and so they've already provided a lot of great feedback that we were able to incorporate into the drawings, so there shouldn't be any surprises when we go through that review process.
Okay. Thank you for your work on this. Is there, are there any questions the council has? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
I move we approve this to go out for advertisement for bids.
Okay, motion by Craig, seconded by C. If not, Stephen, would you call the vote?
Meister?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Molesky?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Lizinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We look forward to favorable bids. We'll move then to agenda number, anything more on this, Sharon, that you want? We'll move then to agenda number 13, the update from the Adult Community Center. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council members. So as you know, or maybe you don't know, I'm Katie Bruzen. I'm the coordinator of the Marshall Adult Community Center. I've been in that position for about a year and a half, and so I came here tonight to just give you our annual update, what we've been doing, and kind of what's happening over at the Adult Community Center. So I did pass out a few handouts. We'll go through a few things. If you're not familiar with where we are, or if you're joining us online, this is what our building looks like from the outside. I always tell people we're a little bit tricky to find, but we're kind of in the back parking lot behind the gambler there, and we always tell people, look for our big red building. So at the Adult Community Center, there's kind of three areas here that I've got highlighted. So we serve the Marshall and the surrounding communities. When I was looking through some of our statistics, we currently have people that come from nine different counties in Minnesota, and we are overseen by the Adult Community Center Commission, which meets twice a year. Housed within our facility, we have the Marshall area senior citizens. That's a group of people over the age of 55, and they become a member of this, it's called the M.A.S., we refer to it as the M.A.S. They are operating with their own board, they meet monthly, they pay a monthly rental fee to the city of Marshall for use of that facility and the room. And then we also have housed within the dining area Lutheran Social Services. A lot of people know that as Meals on Wheels. They serve approximately 75 people a day in their home delivery portion, and their congreg dining, it really varies. Sometimes they might have four or five people, but sometimes they might have 50 or 60 people depending on the day. So currently, they've been doing sponsored meals through grants and local business sponsorships to do those higher engagement days. Here are some of the events that happen or the different groups, the civic and community organizations that happen in our facility outside of our staff scheduled programming. So you can look through that list. I think there's 13 or 14 different groups. Some of these groups meet weekly, some of them meet monthly, and these are generally open to the public, and they meet for a couple hours once a month. Some of them are an hour once a week. So on one of your, one of the handouts I gave you, it's got 2023 on the front. This is just a list of some of the bigger events that we've done in the past year. These are outside of our normal scheduled events. So you can see, we have quite a variety of different events that we've offered, from entertainment to educational presentations, tours of things. We really try to provide opportunities for seniors in the community to become engaged, to reduce isolation, social isolation and loneliness in that older adult population. One of the things I like to point out to people is you might see like we have a tour of something as a senior, or we might enjoy, we're going to have a coffee and conversation, so we're going to go buy a big bottle of the gingerbread flavored creamer to share just because we want to give that opportunity for the seniors. They might not want to buy a big thing by themselves, or they might not want to go to the new grocery store by themselves. And so we just really look for opportunities to educate them and to engage them and give them opportunities to enjoy social games and activities and events. You can see on that second page there, this has got a list of the things that we've done so far in 2024. We are always open to ideas, so if anybody, you know, comes to the council and says, you know what, we really want for seniors, an opportunity to do this, we a lot of times can try to line that up. The items that you see up on the screen right now, those are things that we do on a regular basis, whether they're monthly, weekly, quarterly, those are all different things that are routine parts of our, of our schedule. In 2023, so we use a system to check seniors in, and a lot of the seniors in the community are not necessarily in our system. They're not necessarily a member of the M.A.S., but that check-in system, in 2023, we had over 13,000 check-ins, unduplicated people, so 437 unduplicated people. And that number is kind of maybe misleading because we do have probably closer to 1,200 people in our system. So those would be people who maybe attend a safety driver's class or who are not a member, but they come for one of those organizational meetings that we saw on an earlier screen. So far through the end of June in 2024, that number looks like we're on track to have a little bit higher attendance this year. Those numbers don't include the non-staffed events or the people who are not members. So a rental, a private rental for like a birthday party or a bridal shower or whatever it would be, that doesn't include guests that have used the facility. Here's some pictures of some of the fun things we do, tours, presentations, entertainment. We adopt Memorial Park, we clean that once a month. So this is just a week in the life at the center. You can see, we're pretty busy all day. On an average day, I would say in the last year, we see between 40 to 80 people, just depending on what we have on the calendar. Some days we may see more, some days we may see less. We have a couple of different fitness and wellness opportunities in the morning, and that's typically when we would offer a presentation or one of the non-standard events. So we had a men's event scheduled today where it was just a grant-funded event that we could provide an opportunity for men to get together and just visit. And we had a historical speaker, Doug Omen, come from the cities today, and he talked about libraries of Minnesota. He's an author, he brings his books and shares with us. But you can see, we have quite a variety of opportunities for the older adults in Marshall. So in the last year, year and a half, here are some of our noteworthy highlights that we've had. So under volunteer work, we worked with the Chamber of Commerce, the Marshall Leadership Academy program, and we have lined up volunteers to create tinkerboards for hospice. We've done a bunch of landscape cleanup. Our volunteers help set up our coffee and programming. We had some benches outside that needed to be refinished, and so as we were, we got one set refinished, and then we had a volunteer acquire a donation from the American Legion to get supplies to build more benches for out front, and those are well-received and well-used. And then we have handyman who might come in and say, is there anything you need help with? And we might say, well, can you help us with tightening a door handle or whatnot? So we have a lot of volunteers that really, it's a great opportunity to sort of give people the chance to feel like they're doing something. Maybe they lived in a home, and now they live in an apartment, and they don't have that workshop area anymore, so it really does create a great opportunity for everybody involved. Administratively, in the last year and a half, we had during some of our transition, gone through all of the binders that we had in the building, which were all of our old commission notes and different, all kinds of different membership documents, and we put those all, we backed those all up. We started consolidating information from different systems and updating our scheduling system. We worked with the city attorney on our code of conduct, and the M.A.S. had a code of conduct, and we were able to run that through Attorney Whitmore and her staff, and they gave us some feedback based on different community centers and different feedback that they had received, and it allowed us to have that code of conduct so we can use that for everybody in the building, not just necessarily the seniors. So if we have a rental in the building, it was, it was a little bit more broad, so that covered everybody. And then we've just been updating our efficiencies in how we do some of our, I guess, our administrative work, our mailings and whatnot. 2024, we received a grant from Avangrid to put in water bottle fillers, so we've got one installed and one on the list to be installed. We received a grant for $2,500 from Marshall Community Foundation to go towards some tables, and I'll talk about that in just a few minutes. And then we received a very large grant from, in our terms, a very large grant from the Paul and Alma Shon Aging Trust Endowment Fund for $25,000, and that was to go just towards programming, and we've had a lot of fun with that. We're looking at what gaps there are, how can we get more seniors to come and participate? Another new thing we started to raise funds is a cell phone recycling program. So if people have old cell phones, we can add those to our list. We're working with the National Council on Aging to participate in that program. These are projects we've completed in the last year and a half, and then a little bit on our to-do list, we have done just a lot of updating of some of the bits and pieces of the building that maybe haven't been updated for a few years and needed to be addressed. We see the benches on there, the handyman projects. We've updated our registers in the building. A lot of them had broken dampers on them. We worked on eliminating some ant problems, and we have ordered tables for the facility. That was partially funded through our general budget and then those grants that we saw on there, and then that M.A.S. has contributed the difference that we were able to order 30 replacement tables. Those are scheduled to be shipped at the end of this month, and we should be able to start getting those assembled and in use in August. Coming up, some things we're hoping to do is address the airflow to our fridge and kitchen room for Lutheran Social Services. We're looking at maybe doing some automatic exterior lighting so that, you know, that goes on when it becomes dark, I think, like a sense, a sensor of some sort, and just looking at our windows and when we need to start replacing some of those. What's coming up, you'll have a flyer, this is the first thing on there, August 20th, we're having an open house. So we've, we've got a grant, that programming grant that we talked about, we're funding some with that. The game expo, we're going to highlight, really highlight what the daily games that we have. So we're doing a game expo, and the M.A.S. is celebrating this, it'll be their 40th year of being incorporated, so they'll be providing cake and ice cream for that. And then we have some dueling piano scheduled. We're using that grant money just to raise awareness in the community and say, you know, everybody come to the center and see what you have to offer. So I might try to say to my parents, I'm not necessarily old enough to become a member of the M.A.S., but I would say, you should really come up here, they have all kinds of great things to do. So we're inviting anybody to come to that. We'll have that set up out in the parking lot, so we ask people to bring some lawn chairs for that. With that grant, we received some funding to create some Stay Sharp kits, so those kits are kits that people can check out. It might be a weather kit or a backyard birding kit, so that's something we're hoping to have completed here by the end of the year. We're going to be, we are working on a survey with Minra, ACE, and Adult Basic Ed, and what is, what's the goals here? What are we, what are we wanting to do in this building? What are we, are we missing any areas in the community? Are we being inclusive? And are we balancing our old with our new? We're going to continue to offer programming to meet the needs of the community, and you'll see on there, one of the things that we continually look for is a tech, a tech U volunteer, we call it. So we had a student from SMSU, a computer science student who would come in once a month and sit in our lobby, and people could come in and say, listen, I got my phone voicemail stuck in Spanish, can you help me change it? I don't know how to do it. Or my son set my phone screen to Wordle, my home screen to Wordle, and now I've lost and I can't find it. So, you know, some, something simple. We've reached out to a couple of different organizations to ask for like student volunteers, the National Honor Society. Our hours don't necessarily align with some of the community helpers that would be interested. And then we just want to continue to help the older adults in the community feel value and fulfillment by providing opportunities to live their best life, and I think that's what I've got. So if anybody has any questions or ideas, we're happy to hear those.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions or input from the council?
I do have to ask why you're carrying a box of light bulbs?
Oh, yes.
I carried them up.
I carried them up here. That was a good question, see? We also, one of the projects that we've been working on is Greenlight has contacted us, and they have the opportunity to distribute light bulbs in the community to try to help basically create energy efficiency, get light bulbs into low-income housing. And so this is our third pallet we've got. In the first two pallets, we had 50 boxes, 25 on each one, and each box holds 24, four packs of light bulbs. So then we just got another pallet with 50 boxes, 50 cases, each one having 24. So we've got those available for seniors. We've worked with a couple of different community agencies to get them distributed in the community, and so we have them available at the Adult Community Center. I think we've probably got about maybe 25 cases left, but just it's a group effort to get energy loads, I guess, reduced and create some cost reduction for the seniors that are using them. Good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions or input? If not, thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
We'll move then to agenda number 14. This would be the report from Tallgrass Liquor, our annual report. So with us tonight is Eric Luther, our manager. Welcome, Eric.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Before you have the liquor operations annual report for 2023. As you know, the liquor store has been in operation since 1934. Our current liquor store is located on 1410 Boyer Drive and has been operating this, at this location since November 2016. And to this day, the profits from the liquor operations provide a much-needed revenue source for the Marshall community, and the profits from the municipal liquor store help reduce the property tax levy and provide funds for special projects. You can kind of see our team of organizational structure there. We've got listed there four full-time, myself, the manager, three full-time associates, and then we have 13 part-time clerks. One note to add, we did add a full-time sales associate last April, Al Bosut, and he began in his role, and that's going along really well. Mission statement, again, we're here to control alcohol, the sale of alcohol through the statutes of Minnesota State, provide great, provide the best quality shopping experience for our customers, profitability back to the community, provide a fun environment for our customers, associates, and managers. Can see our store priorities there. So get down to the dollars and cents for 2023. Overall sales of our liquor operations were $7,376,000 with an income before transfers of approximately $1,158,000. This was an increase of total sales by about $300,000, an income before transfers increase of about $270,000 when compared to 2022. So overall, a pretty dang good year. You can kind of see our sales history here. We've have been slowly increasing our sales. 2021 was a slight dip coming off of a COVID year, which we saw kind of record years of sales there, but as we've grown along here the last several years, couple of years, it's always been growing at a great rate there, so. The next slide we've got is income before transfers, a little bit of history there. You can kind of see, we've done pretty well with transferring dollars back into the city general fund, special projects, debt service, all the above. We average probably right around $1 million over that every year for the last four years, so that's pretty good. As we get into sales and profit by category, you can kind of see beer is our biggest category of our product mix, accounts for approximately 45% of our sales. Spirits is at about 39%, 40%. Wine is about 13%. Miscellaneous, which would be soda pop or mixers or some of those kinds of things that we sell. And then for new in 2023, since July, we have started selling THC edibles and seltzers and sodas. So we put that into the mix for about a half a year. So gross profit by category, you can kind of see spirits leads the way in kind of that share. Beer is our lowest gross profit product in our store. Wine is up there a little ways. It kind of makes up for, actually, spirits and wine kind of make up for what we lose in beer. You can see THC is a very profitable item that, that I think we're in really good shape with making that. Currently, we're about 4% of sales of the THC edibles and seltzer. And then the last category miscellaneous mix, which also has a really good profit margin. So I alluded to the transfer history the last five years. You can kind of see, we've grown kind of our transfer history from You can kind of see we've grown kind of our transfer history from just the general fund back in 2019 and 2020. We had a great year in 2020 and we took advantage of that and transferred and did a lot of capital projects. Debt service fund and general fund, 2022 also, and then 2023. Also, again, a nice year to transfer a bunch of money back into the city.
So the debt service fund, that is for the City Hall?
Correct. That's the money that we put towards the City Hall debt amount that we pay each year.
And the high year in 2020, if that charter spec, that would be for the majority of that was for paving of the sidewalks at Independence Park.
Correct. Trail system. Yep. Very good.
2023, that was to use to offset the amount of debt that we issued last year to go towards some of our projects at the different parks.
Good.
You can kind of see a little sales graph here. I'll just kind of touch upon the highlights here. You can kind of see May through August is our high point of our season. You can kind of see summer really cranks some sales through for beer and ready-to-drinks and all the above. And then you can kind of see December finishes with a bang. Our biggest month is in December for the year. So some trends here to kind of touch upon, ready-to-drinks. As I said, ready-to-drink cocktails continued to sell well in 2023. These are both vodka-based and then rum-based types of products like Carbus and High Noon and Malibu. They're all make a ready-to-drink. Craft beer also does well with brands like Grain Belt Premium, Surly, Brow Brothers, Talking Waters are very popular with our customers. Non-alcoholic beer also has seen a big increase and that trend is also a lot higher than it has been. It used to be only a couple beers were offered of non-alcoholic, which was Be Coors and Bush Light. Now there's probably, I bet we have 25 or 30 different kinds. And same way with spirits-based non-alcoholic offerings too. Wine non-alcoholic offerings are also as well. So everybody's in that market of, you know, finding something to kind of have with your friends and stuff that isn't alcoholic. So we stock a lot of those products. So THC also has done well this last half of '23 and it continues to do well in 2024. And so that's also a big trend. So events, we have have always done sampling events at our store, in-store. We host several larger events, the Fall Wine Lockabout, 'Tis the Season Holiday Sampling Event. And then in September, we'll do a bourbon tasting experience. And all these are promoting activation of our brands that we have at the store and the products that we offer. We also did a bigger event in May. We co-sponsored that with Visit Marshall with the Made Minnesota Craft Beer and Wine Festival at the Red Baron. We had 38 vendors, around 400 attendees, sampled products from breweries and wines just across the state of Minnesota. We continue to raise up our ordering line, online ordering platform, which continues to gain users and build awareness. We do this, we've been doing it probably, I bet anywhere from two to four orders a day come through. We do a lot of special events at SMSU football games or at Perry Jam where orders come through from the suite holders that came processed and we bring it out, the product out that way. You can see a few community service support involvement that we're involved with. So that's a big part of our store and giving back into the community as well as the dollars. You can see some of the accomplishments. Some of them are equipment-related where we've added a wash sink in the back of the warehouse to kind of help with breakage and some cleaning there. We've had some other customer service enhancements to the sales floor, which concludes the locked cabinet for high-end and allocated products where customers can shop these products still on the floor rather than having them in back where they really can't see them. And that's really worked well. We've added two six-foot-long refrigerated open-air merchandisers to allow our store to offer more cold, single-can offerings and then also more ready-to-drink products. And then we just recently added several, actually four, large electronic message boards that will advertise our daily specials or monthly specials and then other in-store informations like new products that we get to kind of capture some people that are looking at beer or wine or liquor. So June through, January through June, we have sales history for you here, sales figures for you. Sales continue to increase steadily, 4.1%. Customer count about 2% and average ticket about 2%. So you can kind of see where we're at on sales for the year-to-date. Some months have grown quite a bit. June was down a little bit, but still gaining about 4%. So you can kind of see some budget notes there. We are budgeting about a 3% in overall sales for 2024, over 2024 for '25. We're, as I said, we're trending about 4% of sales. I think our customers continue to see the value and selection that we offer along with the great shopping experience is kind of what we're seeing and what we're hearing. So gross profit is a big part of our business. If we're not hitting that, we're not hitting the bottom line. So we've continued to focus in on that with monthly reports and just pricing and all the above, adding some features for our customers that help with add-on sales, that always help with increasing your gross profit and average ticket ring. So I think that's about it for what we have for 2023. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Questions for Eric?
I don't necessarily have a question for you, Eric, but I felt the gas a quick trip today and they advertise on their little TV that we need to promote to get the bill to sell stronger at the gas stations. You were to the conference, Bob, you're involved with us. Is that close to Minnesota? Because that's a big part of our sales. Is that something that we need to look at in the future or not worry about it or?
I think we're always worrying about it. Our Association of MMBA, along with the MLBA, is always looking at that piece. Right now, it's been kind of dead in the water for a couple of years. I think they've focused on a little bit more other types of things versus alcohol, beer and wine, liquor everywhere. That is a concern. And so we continue to fight to make sure that we are protecting our investment here with our municipal liquor store and all the things that we provide for the community. I think when you ask, say, Senator Ames and say, hey, you know, when we're putting back a million dollars into Marshall, where are we going to get that if that sales, if our sales go away or decrease? And so that's a big thing that we always continue to work with our state legislature and our representatives and senators to say, hey, we really, this is an asset for our communities.
Other question for Eric? Eric, we appreciate your expertise, your professionalism, and your leadership of a good staff there. So thank you.
Thank you.
EJ, anything you wanted to add? Okay. Very good. Then we'll move to the next agenda item, which would be to consider the Tallgrass agreements for canning, photograph use, and fiscal agent. Once again, I guess we'll just turn directly to you, Eric.
Well, this is my idea, of course, of always thinking of things here, what we can do to promote. I guess, you know, people coming, visiting our store, you know, product consumption, product sales, all the above there. And then the partnership that comes with that with a local brewery here in town and then also another institution with SMSU being involved too. So all three of those are kind of involved with this project. And so we've been working on it for probably four or five months and we're ready to get it off the ground and start selling things probably later in August at Sounds of Summer. So I do believe we have some agreements to get to this point. For photographic use, we've got an agreement with the Lyon County Historical Society to use a picture of our depot to be on a beer can that's going to be the Brew 1872, which is an amber ale, which is that one right there. And then we have-
So the picture in the background is of the train depot?
So that is one of the agreements that we've been fortunate to get signed off and go ahead with. The other one is the canning with Brow. They're under contract to produce 200 cases of each of these beers that will be used in this project. And that has been signed and agreed to. And then the fiscal agent agreement with SMSU. Part of the, part of this project is a kind of a fundraising piece that would allow us to donate back to SMSU athletics, $1 for each six-pack of that Mustang Golden Ale that you see up there. And then also a dollar on this fridge pack is what you would see here that would go back to SMSU. So $1 each to kind of help with their fundraising effort. And so this package that you see right here is called the Fridge Pack, which has the four beers, Cultivate. We had this and a Crowler, which is a 750-mL package and stuff, which, you know, you drink one of those, you're feeling pretty good. So we've got a six-pack. What we can break it down is it kind of follows that same logo and the same type of, you know, just the same feel as we did with the Crowler before. Same beer, pale ale. And then the amber ale, like I talked about, is more of a kind of amber, a little heavier than a light beer. And that's going to be, they've got a special recipe for that that we're going to make. These are all beers that will be sold at Tallgrass only for the first year. And then the Jiminy Jumper Juicy Apple is an apple-flavored Old 56. So it'll be made with the award-winning Old 56 Lager and then flavored with apple. And then the Mustang Golden Ale is a kind of a lighter golden ale. SMSU designed the can and did the graphics for that. We had Lauren Deitz from our EDA do the package design for our three cans. So I think it turned out pretty good.
I got one quick question.
Yep.
The depot, is it the original, was the depot that's on Marvin Schwann Drive or is the depot still standing in town?
Still stands.
Because we had two in town that went down. And I'm old enough to remember them both.
The other question for Eric. Looks like a great question. So the, go ahead.
Yep. I don't know if the agreements and stuff, if that's something that you need to put up on the image there or we-
So we did work with City Attorney Pam Whitmore to draft some of these agreements. They are brought back. They've all been either signed and/or at least verbally agreed upon to date. So it is for those three different purposes that we listed before, the mayor listed before. One is permission of the, permission of use of the photographs with the Sorc Society, the local branding or canning with Brow Brothers, and then the fiscal agent agreement for the SMSU Foundation.
And those three agreements can be handled in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. What's the wishes of the council? You had those three agreements that would entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, Stephen?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Meister?
Yep.
Schroder?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes. And the motion does pass. So when's this going to be available?
We're planning August 24th, Sounds of Summer Weekend.
Very good.
So right before school starts and that. So it's kind of exciting to see this kind of take shape and move ahead. It's Kurt from Brow said, oh, this is going to be a lot of work. And it has been. So, but we're getting close.
Very good.
Yep. So very good. Thank you for support and thanks.
Thank you, Eric. EJ?
I just wanted to point out that with 200 cases of each flavor, we've got 19,200 cans coming our way. So stay Thursday.
Okay. Very good. We'll move along then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number 16. Consider the adoption of the ordinance amending the salaries of the mayor and the council person. So this is, was introduced at our last regular council meeting. This is required by charter that this be at least discussed every two years. And if this ordinance would go into effect, it would be effective after the next general election. And so it'd be January of 2025. And the adoption of the ordinance would, the ordinance would incorporate the past practice of the salary adjustment for the regular non-union city employees for the previous two years. So Sharon, do you, anything that you want to add to that?
Sure. I apologize. I actually should have said more at the last meeting, but I am glad that the mayor mentioned the past history with salary adjustments and that you followed the previous two years of union contracts, which was 3% in '24, in '23 and '24. So that was appreciative. I do want to point out, it's in the memo as well, that no change in the salary shall take effect until after the next succeeding municipal election. I know you said that too as well, Mayor. So that's really kind of a safeguard for the council setting their own salary. If the public does not agree with that, they certainly can make their opinions known at the general election in November. And that really is the basis for that. The other thing I want to point out, and I think I did this two years ago, I do think it is, it's not about really just compensation. We know that you all put in a lot of hours. It does not really cover the amount of time you put in. But I do think salaries are important. It is an equity issue as well. We don't want just candidates for office who can afford those that are well-off. So if you do provide a salary, it may attract people who have lower salaries. So it's, to me, kind of prevents some discrimination about those who can't afford to serve. So elective official salary is always a contentious, tough decision because you're making it really amongst yourselves, but you are looking ahead. And if you want people to serve, it could provide some attraction to qualified candidates and also maybe provides for some competition for some of the positions as well. So I wanted to add that too as part of the discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Discussion or input or questions that the council may have? What are the wishes of the council?
I move approval.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Steve. Now, discussion on the motion. If there's no discussion on the motion, Stephen, would you call the roll? Vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Lizinski?
No.
Mulewski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Amanda?
I think we covered preliminary, Planning Commission is the only thing I've been to. Wow, I can't talk. It's been quiet. But we covered the preliminary plat in the consent agenda for AgPlus. And there really wasn't a lot of comment. There was a little interest in actually extending that frontage road, but it's not a city project. So it's something that that person will have to work out with AgPlus if that was to happen. Otherwise, that's it.
Okay. For my part, the Fire Relief Association did have their quarterly meeting this morning and there's a couple of things that were reviewed. One is their annual audit, which was conducted by Hoffman and Bropp's auditing firm. And they had a clean- they had a clean audit. In twenty twenty-three, they let me back up. The Fire Relief Association manages the pension fund for Marshall firefighters. So then that pension fund is set at sixty-two hundred dollars per year, and that's eligible for each of the years that the firefighters have served. This past year, in twenty twenty-three, there was five members that retired, and so there it's a lump sum payout from the pension fund. So those five members were paid out a total of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. The fund itself is healthy. In twenty twenty-three, it had a thirteen-point-four-seven return, and that return is based on on their investments in both equity and fixed funds. The fund is at a hundred and twenty-seven percent funded right now, so it is adequately funded. And because of that, in twenty twenty-five, there's no required city contribution, whereas in twenty twenty-four, I believe it's right around six thousand dollars is the city contribution. John?
Nothing.
See?
The CVB met, Convention Visitors Bureau met, and there's a lot of events they have coming up. So they have quite a few. They're pretty full with SMSU Wrestling, Minera Retreat, Maha Hockey, and so on. And then there's still discussion about the cleaning stations, and Thursday's and third start this month, I think. I don't know if it happened yet. So it's going to be really they're really excited about being able to use that the Third Street there. Sounds of Summer coming up, and then Prairie Jam in September, and they're kind of at where they are for ticket sales the last few years. And and then they have the Art and Living History Festival. So that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, See. Jim?
Nothing.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Craig, we'll start on your end.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Steve?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Jim?
I have one thing, and I visited Jason about this already, but earlier this week or next last week, Min and it's MinDOT. This is not the city's fault, but MinDOT went and did a bunch of work by a local business and did not inform them and made a colossal mess out of all their new cars, and they were not happy. And I told Jason this, if somebody's listening, MinDOT, you need to work with the private sector because without the private sector, we don't need a public sector. I mean, they they threw concrete dust on million dollars worth of cars and didn't care. And that is very frustrating to me that the state is cruise up by cruise motor to the sidewalk. They darn near tipped over a concrete truck on their stuff. They planted it in the mud, and it's just frustrating when when the government, and again, it was MinDOT, the city is very good about communicating, but just go ahead and does stuff and doesn't communicate. They were very frustrated out there, and I just if somebody from MinDOT is listening or Jason, I relayed that and I went public to know that MinDOT, they made a mistake, and they need to be held accountable. So that's all I have.
See?
I don't have anything.
And John?
Nothing.
Okay. We'll move to the remaining items on the agenda, the staff reports. Sharon?
Uh, yes. Our city intern, Stephen Zimmer, is actually nearing the end of his time with the city. His last day is actually going to be Wednesday, August seventh, and I thought it would be a really great opportunity for him to just kind of update the council on some of the things that he's been working on. And he has a a short presentation. I think he's got a short PowerPoint too to do that. So if you don't mind, I could have him present that.
Very good. Welcome, Stephen.
Good evening, council. So I'm very excited to share with you all what I've been working on this summer with my internship here at the City of Marshall. And so you guys may be wondering, you know, why local governments, what got me interested in local governments? And so there's a couple of things that, you know, got me interested in working for the city and doing this internship. So I've always been interested in like intergovernmental relationships, and so just learning about the different branches of governments, the different levels of governments, and how they work together, how they might work with the private sector, and just how they deliver services to their constituents. So that's always interested me. And then, you know, growing up, I just did various community activities, went to different events, worked with different volunteer organizations, and so I've learned over the years how important community is and just serving the people within your community. And so that's also got me interested in local government because ultimately, local government serves the needs of their local people and residents. So that's kind of what got me interested in, you know, local government and then just doing an internship with the City of Marshall. And so one of the first things I got to do this summer was look at other cities ordinances and then draft some potential ordinances for the City of Marshall. So one of them ended up being golf carts. And I'd say when doing research for this, you know, it was pretty black and white. I would say, you know, most cities that allowed golf carts either said you could use them on any city street as long as it wasn't a state or highway street. Otherwise, you know, if they allowed golf carts, it would either basically be like to and from the golf course or some neighboring streets by the golf course. And then, of course, there were also some different safety features that were in these ordinances, such as making sure that you had working headlights, taillights, a slow vehicle emblem on the back, as well as making sure that these vehicles could only operate between sunrise and sunsets. But the my favorite one I did research on had to have been the chickens, of course. And so the thing I really liked about the chickens is that the ordinances varied city by city, like no two ordinances were the same, which I thought was just very fascinating. And so some examples I have for you guys is it varied by the number of chickens in your backyard. You know, some cities would have a max of four, five, six, seven chickens. In fact, there was one city I looked at, and in their ordinance, you could apply for a license to have up to like thirty chickens in your backyard. Yeah. So I thought it was super crazy. And then, you know, there were some other cities where, you know, in order to have chickens in your backyard, you needed some written consent by X amount of your neighbors that lived within like a hundred feet, hundred fifty feet of your residency. And then there were some cities where, you know, you would need a license to sell eggs. Otherwise, it'd be prohibited to sell eggs from the chickens in your backyard. And then another thing I got to do was compare rates. And so the two that I mainly worked on this summer were water utility rates being one of them. And so just looking at groundwater, mechanical water, as well as stormwater, looking at those rates. And so when I was doing the research for this, I looked at cities that had a population of about ten thousand to twenty thousand, and I looked at fifteen different cities, and I figured out that Marshall has the third most expensive for monthly water bill. And through the research and just talking to people like Sharon, I learned that part of the reason why we're more expensive compared to other cities is we have extra services that we provide with our water utility rates. And then pool rates was another thing I looked at, especially since we're getting the new Aquatic Center. So just looking at like daily admission rates, season tickets, party rental rates, and looking at, you know, the average for those ten cities I looked at and just figuring out, you know, where is Marshall at currently for some of these features? And, you know, will we want to increase it, decrease it when we get the new Aquatic Center? And through this process, I learned that it's important, you know, working in a city when you compare your rates to other cities, just to see, okay, are we above the average, below the average? Are we at the average? And, you know, would it be smart increasing it, decreasing it for the residents? So I really liked that process as well. And then, of course, with all the exciting research comes some of the more mundane tasks. So one thing that Sharon had me do was go through her administrator emails and just sort those by year. So in case you guys were wondering.
I got a lot of emails. Sorry.
There's a delete button.
Yeah, so in case you guys were wondering, between, you know, November of two thousand twenty-one to December of two thousand twenty-three, I went through approximately like twenty-five thousand emails. So, yeah, Sharon's pretty busy, let's just say that. And then another thing I have to do was go through some old attorney files from Kornstrom. So my first week here, EJ and I went to Kornstrom, went to their basement, and we ended up packing, I'd say, about thirty-three boxes, and there were already like eleven boxes when I before I got here. So there was like a total of forty-four boxes I had to sort through, and I haven't finished that yet. I'm a little under halfway through those boxes, and I got about twenty-six left to sort. But of course, you know, regardless of what position you have in local government, you're always going to have to work on some of those small, mindless tasks to help fill up your One of the highlights I'd say that I got to do was attend the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. So myself, Sharon, the mayor, as well as council members, Lozinski and Moleski, got to attend the League of Minnesota Cities, and throughout the days we were there, we went to different sessions, my favorite being the AI in government. And I really liked this one just because, as we all know, ChatGPT and other AI forms have been on the rise within the past couple of years. So it was very fascinating to me just learning about how we can use AI in local government. And so some examples they had brought up were, you know, design projects for like Parks and Rec, Public Works, as well as, you know, drafting up offer letters in HR and just other emails that you would send throughout local government. But of course, you know, there's some things to be mindful for, and they had talked about things like bias in information and just being aware of like the information you put in and what comes out of it. Because with ChatGPT and other forms of AI, they're very sensitive to what you put in. So if you put in quality information, you'll get quality information back. But if you put in garbage information, you'll get garbage information back. So it's one of those things where, yes, it can be a benefit to local government, but you also got to be cautious as well of what comes in and what comes out. There were some good guest speakers as well, just talking about knowing your brand and just marketing yourself as a city, being involved with like small businesses, especially your downtown, getting the arts and culture involved and just bringing your city to life. And networking was another thing I got to do here. I got to meet with various administrators, managers, council members, mayors throughout the state, and it was just very fun getting to learn a bit about their backgrounds. I think it's safe to say that I've met every administrator you can think of from those that got their masters in public administration and started working in local government as soon as they got their masters, to those that went to school later in life as a non-traditional student, got a bachelor's in education, and still ended up as a city administrator. So wide variety of people I got to meet at that conference, which was cool. And then, of course, I got to attend various meetings. Now, if you've attended a meeting with me and Sharon, Sharon's probably brought it up at least once that I like attending the meetings, and I can confirm that she is not wrong in that statement. I really did enjoy attending the meetings throughout the summer, one of them being the staff meetings, which you can see in this photo right there, and just learning about the different updates that the division heads had, as well as going over the agenda for next week's council meeting. And then some other meetings I got to attend were the Aquatic Center meeting, just learning at where we were with the new updates for our Aquatic Center, planning for Juneteenth, planning for the Fourth of July, and what to do in the events of the weather, which we ended up moving back to the Fifth of July. EDA updates from Lauren, just learning about where we were with potential businesses, housing developments coming to Marshall, and just looking at where we were with places like Marshalls, our second quit trip, and Solugen. And then another highlight for meetings was First Children's Finance. And so just meeting with this local group who does studies with different cities throughout the state and just figuring out different childcare needs. And so that's been a pleasure getting to attend as well. But I'd say my favorite thing I got to do this summer, though, was just the various one-on-one interviews. And so as you can see, I've interviewed a lot of people this summer, which has just been a highlight, and I really liked this the most just because it's nice having that one-on-one with people and kind of going at your own speed, asking various questions, and just learning a bit more about these departments, what they do for the city and the services they do. So it's just been very eye-opening for me, getting to learn from all these individuals here on this list. And so some of the things I've gotten out of this internship before I end for you guys, I'd say this has definitely given me a head start for my master's program. And so once I start my master's next month, it'll be nice applying some of my knowledge and experience from this internship to the contents I learned in the class, networking with various city staff, and just learning from them and having those connections for not only during my time in my master's program, but once I graduate with my master's and just in general, having more knowledge on local government and the different services we provide. I think it's safe to say that there's a bunch of things I've learned that I didn't really know of before, especially from places like, you know, the wastewater facility, as well as the Adult Community Center, learning about some things that happen within, you know, the police department. And so it's just been a very eye-opening experience as someone from the outside now coming in, and I'm just very thankful for this experience and having worked with the various city staff, interacting with the different council members as well as community members. So it's just been a great experience overall, and thank you guys so much.
Well, thank you, Stephen. And any questions for Stephen? If not, thank you for your service as intern. Let's give Stephen a round of applause.
Thank you.
Sharon, anything more?
No, I I know you did a police ride-along last night, so.
Yes.
A little tired from that last night, but that was also a really great experience for you and something I haven't even done yet. Maybe some council members have, but I was really glad you got to do that, too.
Yep.
Very good. Good. We'll move then to the remaining items on the on our agenda. You can see for in the continuing with staff reports, Jason?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Very little to report. The construction projects are going well. Whitney Street Project, they're grading the first phase of the project and preparing that. Sanitary Sewer being installed in the second phase. Lion Circle, they're prepping for concrete, hopefully to start being placed at the end of this week possibly. So those are going well. I would also point out that the street department is assisting the City of Wyndham tomorrow. Our administrator received, they reached out to Sharon and asked for support in collecting sandbags as part of their recovery from flooding. So our street department will be sending four employees, two dump trucks and a small wheel loader there to assist and kind of take a quadrant of the city and help them clean up tomorrow. So we will be eligible for FEMA reimbursement for that effort as well.
Jason, a quick question on that. Is that being done through the warrant agreement? Do you know?
I do not believe that that is true, no.
Okay.
The so, yes, the City of Wyndham, and Sharon, you may want to comment on that. The, you know, did reach out. I believe there's five cities that responded, Marshall being one of them. You know, they they placed a lot of sandbags, and as my old friend Dave Smiguski used to say, volunteers will always show up to fill and place sandbags, but not to take them down. So so that's why they needed extra help. So. Any other questions for Sharon for Jason? If not, I'll move to Pam, City Attorney Pam Whitmore.
Yeah, nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
And we then will move to the remaining items on the agenda, which you can see are listing of cash and investments, the various variance adjustment permit for a reduced side yard at thirteen oh-nine East College Drive, and either Amanda or or Ilya. The reason that's here for information is that it was discussed by the Planning Commission, and it was determined that there was really no action that was needed, correct?
That was after the fact, actually, but yes, that's correct. Do you want?
And did you want to make any other comment on that?
Most of the questions.
Okay. And on any of these things, we can respond to questions or address questions. The Planning Commission minutes are there for review, the listing of building permits, as well as the listing of upcoming meetings. So that those items are there for the council's information. If there's any questions about those, we can address those. If not, we'll move to agenda item number twenty-six, and I'll ask, is there any other business to come forth at this meeting this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Question by Steve, seconded by Amanda to adjourn. Discussion? If not, by voice vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion passes. We are adjourned.